We have loads...
Rich Morano.
First of all, I wanted to thank you, board members. I know this has been a crazy year for you. If you could adjust your agenda next year to have less big things like COVID, like this stuff, like everything, I think it would really make a lot more sense. But anyway, I wanted to thank you for being here. I grew up in Chicago in the 1960s. I went to an all-white high school. It was the 7,200 students. My freshman class had 2,200 students. It was a very mixed class or very mixed school. The time when I was there was in the 1960s. Lots of racial tension, if you don't know anything about Chicago in the 1960s. We had loads of problems. Many days, there was hundreds of police officers on campus. Racism was a problem then. I'm sure it's a problem now. I don't think this is a question tonight, I hope, of dealing with racism, but how to deal with it. I have three students who went through school here in Burlington. I'm a retired teacher myself. I taught for 34 years, high school science, and also taught at the college level. I've written much curriculum. I know something about what it's like to teach curriculum to teachers and to write curriculum. I've done it actually overseas in Sierra Leone multiple times, working with teachers, so I know something about teaching curriculum, writing curriculum. I'm not saying that to brag, but just to let you know I know something about what's involved in it. And it is a very difficult task. And I think it is important to have curriculum, given all of the stuff that's going on with your teachers right now between COVID, hybrid school, online, all of that stuff. You're not going to ask them to develop meaningful curriculum without major pitfalls that you will all have to deal with, as you've already had to deal with, in terms of what you give them. I would strongly urge you though, strongly urge you, not to incorporate the curriculum that's produced by Black Lives Matter organizations. Now, that is not to say I am not concerned about racism. That is not to say that I don't see issues that need to be dealt with. The question is not Black Lives Matter versus nothing. It's what will you use? And I would strongly urge you to not use curriculum from Black Lives Matter. I should tell you one other thing. You're already teaching a lot about racism and actually perpetrating it in your schools. You've been teaching from a book, all of your classes in this school that have been teaching from a book. Here's the title of the book. "The Preservation of Favored Races in the Struggle for Life." The ideas embodied in this book are in all of your textbooks in biology and earth science in this school district and for that matter, throughout the country. The book has another title, and the author's name is... That's three minutes. If you could take 10 seconds to do some long questions. All I would say then, the title of the book is "Nurgion of the Species", and the author's name is obviously Charles Darwin. I would encourage you strongly to reconsider using Black Lives Matter material. It is by an organization that is not intent on dealing with racism, but dealing with overthrowing this country. So I would strongly urge you to reconsider that.
Amen.
Next, we have Robert Jensen. All right, Robert Jensen is next. Robert?
Robert Jensen, again, resident in Burlington, daughter's a graduate of school. So, what got me here in the first place was a quote. I'm going to share that quote. "Why would parents get so angry about their children learning how to value the lives of Black and Brown people?" Quote continues to mean, "It is even more of a reason why the district needs to take action." That is cited based off the Fox six story, and that was Denisee Garbade. I apologize when I butchered her last name. However, it has nothing to do with learning the value of Black or Brown or any other light. It's the introduction of a curriculum from an ideological or political movement, not to mention deeply flawed with assumptions and facts that are based, perceived solely from an ideological conclusion. Now, we're not saying, like the gentleman before me, that Black Lives don't matter. We're saying that Black Lives Matter Incorporated should not be introduced into a curriculum yet. For that matter, from an article from New York Post, Black Lives Matter co-founder Patrice Cullers, or Cullures, or however you pronounce her name, I again apologize, said in a video from 2015 that her and her fellow organizers are, quote, "trained Marxists," making clear their movement is an ideological foundation, according to that. She is also a protege of Eric Mann, the former agitator of the Weather Underground, the mess of terror organization, spent years absorbing his Marxist-Leninist ideologies and shaped her worldview. And I quote again, "The first thing, I think, is what they actually have is an ideological frame. Myself and Alicia, in particular, are trained organizers," according to Cullers, referring to the BLM co-founder, Alyssa Garza. Again, quote, "We are trained Marxists. We are super versed on a sort of ideological theories, and I think that what we really tried to do is build a movement that could be utilized by many, many Black folk," she said in an interview with Jared Ball of Real News Network. While promoting her book, When They Call You a Terrorist, a Black Lives Matter memoir, in 2018, she also described her introduction and support to the Marxist ideology. She described to Democracy Now!, PBS that...
What's this here? Where's this all coming from here?
I just told you...
Not you. No, we're talking about what's going on already.
Well, he's going to quote something that's in regards to something...
I know. We have to stop.
Time is being caused, I hope.
We have to stop. One person at a time speaks.
I'm not saying anything, am I?
I'm not going to give up to intimidation factors. I will continue regardless.
There you go.
Well, promoting her book, When They Call You a Terrorist, a Black Lives Memoir, to Democracy Now!, she became a trained organizer with the Labor Community Strategic Center, which she called her first political home under the membership, or mentorship, I apologize, of Mann, Eric Mann, its director. Also, the center of Labor Community Strategic Center, whatever, expresses its appreciation for the work of the U.S. Communist Party, quote, "especially Black communists," as well as its support for, quote, "the great work of the Black Panther Party." Now, who is Eric Mann, her mentor?
That's three minutes. If you could take 10 seconds to wrap up.
All right, 10 seconds. Eric Mann comes from the STS, which eventually turned into the Weather Underground, was also arrested in fact, in November of 1969, on a terrorist action. I have copies of all of this and the reports, the newspaper articles for each member of the board.
Excuse me, everyone. We're all here. We've got different ideas. We've got different philosophies. This is your opportunity to address the board. We don't want comments between each other. We don't want yelling back and forth. We don't want cheering in the raw. This is your ability to speak directly to us. If you want to talk with each other outside, that's fantastic, but these comments are directed to the board. No!
I did not make one noise. I did not make one noise. That man ignored me. I was silent. I am not intimidating you, just people. I continue to stand because it is not harassment. It is my right to be...
Is she in the meeting here or is she in the meeting?
Excuse me. Excuse me. I allow addressing any one person in the room.
You were correct. I am addressing you, sir. I did not say anything. That man...
I'm not speaking directly to you. I'm speaking to the room.
I didn't see that scene happen, which is what it means.
It's impacting everybody. It is impacting everybody, and we will call an end to public comment.
Hey! Shut up. Can you respect them and let them do their job?
I'm trying to...
Jesus Christ.
My goodness!
Okay.
Please, can you continue, sir?
This is your bullying that you're going to take care of with our kids, right?
Oh, you're really scared of the little girl? I don't want to have... Excuse me. Anyways, everyone, this is not a talk. I don't want to have to adjourn the meeting. I want you all to have a chance to talk, but let's use our good manners here. If you don't agree, fine, take it up after the meeting. Let's let everyone state what they want to talk about. So our next one is Nicole Lor.
My name is Nicole Oberland. I'm a member of the Burlington Coalition for Dismantling Racism, as well as a concerned citizen of Burlington with school-aged children. I want to speak regarding the lax protection our school district provides for students of color. I'm here to enlist your help as educational leaders to ensure that our schools are learning environments where students are free from discrimination based on race and safe learning spaces for students of color. It is not enough to simply pretend that you are addressing the lack of protection and continue to do nothing about the disparity. Your actions should come with immediate implementation and enforcement of an anti-racism policy, as well as the development and instruction of anti-racism curriculum. When the rights and needs to protect students of color are not met with the same level of equity as their white counterparts, we cannot keep hanging our hat on our intentions to do better. We must do better. The anger and fear are heightened, as you can see, and public debate has resulted in the dissemination of misinformation amongst the community. Human rights are not political. Parents and students look to you for leadership. Their hearing from you that such conduct is unconditionally wrong and will not be tolerated will make a difference. We are in a time where your board is handling just one of the many affronts to students of color across this country. I know I'm not alone in saying enough is enough. We are tired of seeing our country and schools destroyed by systematic racism and biased curriculum. We are tired of excuses and the deflection of blame. You are in a unique position at this time to do the right thing and send a clear message that racism and injustices towards students of color will no longer be tolerated. Until every student is able to walk the halls of your school and this community without fear of being targeted for the color of their skin, until every student of color can expect being handled with equal dignity and respect during peer and teacher interaction, none of us can be considered free and none of us can feel safe in your school district. I will not, I will end not with a please, but with a demand that we must do better. I will continue to demand the implementation and enforcement of an anti-racism curriculum and policy, and the enforcement and instruction of these. It is time for a change in this community. I urge you to be part of the solution, and specifically for justice, equality, and a safe learning environment that the students of color in our community deserve.
My name is Phil Katterhagen, Burlington resident, born, raised in this town. Military service, done everything I could to be of value to this community. I served seven years on the school board. I want to thank the school board. You're holding up extremely well. The woke society and anti-cultural attitude can drag you down. I see you holding up, and I appreciate that. You're going to be talking about policy. In my opinion, being a school board member for seven years, policy is a guidance. I have never seen in my seven years, I'll get some argument on this, but I've never seen in my seven years where any policy has ever been policed. It is a guidance. It is an ability to teach or control the timid, the conservative, and normal flaw of the school system. I'm not worried about the policy. I don't care what you do on this policy. You guys are rational, and you know what you need to do, and I feel comfortable that you will. What I am concerned about, this is a slippery slope going into curriculum. And anytime we get into curriculum, that is etched in stone. That is what we're teaching young minds about. Please, 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 don't go down this slippery slope because you're afraid of the woke and anti-cultural media. Do not, whatever you do, get into the 1619 Project discussion and allow it in the school system. Thank you.
Next, Jerry Johnson.
Ah, skip.
You're going to skip me? Jennifer Grunberg.
I feel that everyone here is getting caught up in college instead of... It's hard to imagine that anyone here doesn't want their children freedom and respect ever again. So that's what I'm hoping for.
Humanity, baby.
I'm hoping that you'll make decisions that will help our kids grow up to be kind, loving people that respect everyone around them.
Matt Allen.
Thank you. Yes, Matt Allen, and my address is 619 Nollie.
Last time I thought you'd be telling me that he didn't live here.
I did my address. I just moved to... Was that okay?
Oh, we know.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
Can I speak?
Yes.
So, I'm here. I want to thank you for coming, because you guys are putting in incredibly hard work. You know, certainly some great things have come from this coalition and making us weather back. We have some real social issues that we really have to take head on. I don't think anybody here is ignoring that. We all want love and respect for all our families and kids. Love and respect starts at the house. It starts at the most basic level. Just this weekend, I was at a local park, going out for a run, and I noticed three or four separate kids playing on one equipment, three separate ethnic backgrounds. Not a worry in the world. The oldest one must have been five or six years old. That's what it is in his purest form, okay? By the time we get to school, if schools want to have some kind of a class plan to teach us, again, how to all incorporate love and unity, I'm all for that. I think it needs to come from a more appropriate source. So, it's not as if mine is wrong or... So if you want to find a curriculum or you want to address some of these big social issues, I think you get the support of most of us in this room. And I want to thank you guys for coming, because they've got some serious valid concerns. We're not denying it.
It's not to teach her not to teach her child any...
Yeah, no. No.
So, I think the school board wants to do that. You can look into getting a more appropriate curriculum and by expert, they can put that forward and submit it for review, look it over, and hopefully work it into the school system. That's my thing. That's my personal opinion. We're not ignoring that this happened, but in a more appropriate way, please.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lisa Stewart.
Yep, I'm a long-term Burlington resident. I have two points in this district. And I just want to remind everybody why it's so important that we're here today. Wisconsin has won the first racial disparity race in the world. It means the Black students are suspended at 7 and a half percent more likely to be...
You heard that, buddy. You heard that? What you know about that, buddy?
The Black students have 66% of the percentage, while white students have 93%. The gap between is the worst in the nation. These numbers are not going to change. Wisconsin is failing. There's students of color, and these numbers are not going to change until we do.
So, I've made an open records request. I am the president of the Burlington Coalition for Dismantling Racism earlier this year, and this is what I received, and it sounds like curriculum to me. What did Presidents Hoover, Truman, and Eisenhower have in common? This is something that should be of great interest for you to pass around. I didn't know of this until it was pointed out to me. This is an email that was sent in February of 2017. That during the Great Depression, Herbert Hoover ordered the deportation of all illegal aliens in order to make jobs available to American citizens that desperately needed work. Gary Truman deported over 2 million illegal aliens after World War II to create jobs for returning veterans. In 1954, Dwight Eisenhower deported 13 million Mexicans. The program was called Operation Wetback. It was done so that World War II and Korean War veterans would have a better chance at jobs. It took two years, but they deported them with an exclamation point, because somebody is excited about that. If you have doubts about the veracity of this information, then enter Operation Wetback into your favorite search engine and confirm it for yourself. And this person is excited about this. Now, if they could deport 13 million illegal aliens back then, we could surely do it today. This is the curriculum our children are learning.
That's why I went to school.
Why, why you might ask, don't we do this today? Actually, the answer is quite simple, this person says. Hoover, Truman, and Eisenhower were intelligent, it says, and had... Lost my spot. Let's see. So, something. If you have doubts about the veracity of this, okay, then it goes on to talk about... Oh, there it is. Actually, the answer is quite simple. Hoover, Truman, and Eisenhower were intelligent and had common sense. They were not career politicians worried only about their reelection. This is what our children are learning in this school district. This is what they're being subjected to. And so I want to read the email that I wrote to Plank yesterday. I followed, so we submitted our anti-racism policy back in April of this year. We were told that we would be invited back at the end of April to discuss the policy, whether or not it would be adopted by the school district. Still hadn't heard anything, so I followed up in June after not hearing back. Plank wrote, "We held a drafting session on these policies on May 28th. I did not reach out at that time, as this drafting session was intended for us to understand statutes and get the base language in place that aligns to both federal and state. More specifically, we addressed the following three policies. As soon as I have access to these drafts, I'd be happy to share them so that you can review and offer feedback."
That's three minutes. If you could take 10 seconds to wrap up, please?
What'd you say?
That's three minutes. If you could take 10 seconds to wrap up, please?
Yep, absolutely. So, I have not received the drafts. Plank has not followed up with me, and we need to have an anti-racism policy and curriculum in place. What my husband, my children, and I just endured right outside of this board meeting, and I don't know if that guy is in here, but he was just racially attacking us right outside. And if you missed it, just watch my schools tonight, uh, Fox Sports, and you'll get to see it.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm choosing to speak tonight because many others who feel as I do are afraid to speak out because they own businesses in the community, have children in school, or simply don't want to be seen as racist simply for speaking out. I've lived my entire life, 57 years, in this community. I went through the Burlington schools. My kids went through these schools. I'm speaking as a concerned citizen regarding the potential introduction of curriculum that paints our country and its founders as racist. Yes, our history is one of slavery and racism. It is fair to teach that. Our history is also one that had white slaves. It is also one that had...
Keep going.
It is also one that had a country go to war to end slavery. A history where many people, Black and white, gave their lives to end slavery. And a political party rose up on the issue of ending slavery, the Republican Party. Burlington has a proud history of taking part in the Underground Railroad. Again, local people fought to end slavery. Our country is one of opportunity. People from around the world, white and people of color, are coming here because of the opportunity. You don't see caravans of Americans traveling to Mexico or Central America for opportunity. Americans aren't fleeing in boats to Cuba. Americans aren't fleeing to Russia or China. Quite the opposite. This is our history.
It's a serialism.
White supremacy's history.
Violet.
I'm in favor of anti-racist policies and an anti-racist curriculum that is jointly developed by the Burlington School Board and the broader community. A curriculum such as Critical Race Theory or the 1619 Project that Phil mentioned earlier that teaches that this country is founded on white supremacy and society is inherently racist should have no place in our schools. Teach that racism exists. Racism is wrong, but also teach our kids they live in the greatest country on earth with the opportunity...
If you're white, sure. Sure, if you're white.
Let me share. My sister-in-law moved here from Kenya. My sister-in-law came here as a 17-year-old girl from Kenya. She didn't have family in the States. You might know from geography, Kenya's an African. She became a...
That's the best you can do? Educate us on where Kenya is.
She became, she married my brother, moved to Burlington 30 years ago, and they raised their stepson in the Burlington community. She has not seen racism in this community. She has been embraced by her family and the Burlington community. I love this community, and we need to move forward in a fashion that builds up all people, not tear it down through division, hate, and fear, fomented by Black Lives Matter, as we have seen throughout Milwaukee, Wauwatosa, Kenosha, and other communities. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was that? Linda? Linda Templas. Linda. Greg Harris.
I don't even know what to say. I...
I pass. And Rich Strong said everything that... I was going to say...
Moving forward with...
Yes, I pass.
...educating all children about racial issues. I moved to this community because I wanted to raise my kids here. And this town needs to just get that times are changing. Your white world is gone. We need to welcome people of all different races, religions. And it's over. The white world needs to get a grip, and we're all going to be living in this world except it.
All, you said all?
Linda, I love you. Okay, that's it. Let's go on. Yes, ma'am. Sarah Byelkelt.
Why is she allowing you to speak?
Yeah, I'm looking at you.
Did you sign up to... Be respectful. Be respectful.
All right, is Sarah talking or not? Preston Albright.
It's mine turn to speak.
Why you never spoke?
Speak.
Yeah, why didn't you shut him up?
Speak. Speak. Sometimes I wonder how the shy-timed girl I was at the time is the same beautiful outspoken woman who stands before me today. And in these moments, I realize that I am truly my brother's keeper. Because of a growing pop in Burlington was less than ideal for me. I realized from an early age that it was flat-out dangerous for my brothers. Because for some reason, in the eyes of racism, being a man makes you even less worthy of dignity and respect. Because of a young Hispanic male, my brother faced stereotype after stereotype by him on the daily, but as I stood before you and began to speak... But as I stood before you and began to speak, I was blessed with your neck, new perspective, because I do in a sense get a pass. I don't appear to be a person of color most days. I can typically blend in, but my brother can't, and there's one moment I'll never forget. I was near the office in our very own high school, when a male student fashioned seeming smile and held the door to be one continued to tell me how he had just got into a fight with, and I quote, this fake kid. What he didn't know, the fact that kid was my brother. See, I was near the office because growing up in a town like Burlington gave me an uncertain intuition with my brother. And because the insecurity in the school and justice system in our town ran so deep that my body had a daily become in tune with the fact that my brother was at the hand of a group of stick patients. Of the schools, he was never safe. So, I was near that office because something of it stirring inside me, letting me know that something wasn't right. In that moment, I looked that boy in the eyes and said, oh, he's my brother. To say he wasn't expecting that response is an understatement. He quickly dropped the door, lifted me, and said, never mind, you're one too. What I tell you next is the important part. That kid takes no repercussions for the bile field that left his mouth, but who did was my brother for the reaction he had to it. He was disciplined because he was targeted. These incidents are not honest. In fact, I experienced racism the first time in my life, the very first time I stepped foot in a VASD school. I was a shy, timid young girl with a fear of the world around her, and I would soon realize justifiably so. Because of my weariness of new people and surroundings, I refused to leave my mom's side during my class open house. Because of my skin tone, the skin tone of my mother and I, that I took out as an indication that I must not know English, and therefore need to be placed in a bilingual classroom. They then proceeded to hand my mother the enrollment documentation in Spanish despite the fact that she does not and has not ever learned to read or write in Spanish. I spent my first year of my education in a classroom where I'd been placed because I was profiled and my only friend didn't speak a word of English. VASD quite literally said to me that the first classroom I ever stepped into and my time on was up, an uphill battle from then on. I could go on and on and give you story of story of the things I experienced within this district, but let's face it, you're not prepared for the things I'll say. And quite honestly, you all probably leave here tonight and forget all about it. You'll continue to say how my claims are unfounded. That kind of stuff doesn't happen in Burlington.
That's three minutes, if you could take ten seconds to wrap up, please?
Okay, I, I hear you. I stand before you, I stand before you as a young person, particularly in the name of black males who are too intimidated and fearful by the system that broke them down in the same city to speak for themselves. So, I demand change in their names, I am no longer asking and I will not beg. But I beg you and I hear, hear me when I say this, people are watching school for it. Sincerely, my brother's keeper.
Really, I hope you heard all that. I hope you heard what happened, that's happening at your school, your school.
Where is Preston?
Nothing.
Is Preston by-
The streaming order was the white rapist football player intimidating her in school and being-
Alright, where is, uh-
What you know about that, Burlington?
What you know about that, boys, what you know about that? Aries, where you at?
Who's Preston? Preston, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Preston, I'm a born and raised in Burlington. Even, you're up. So, I just wanted to piggyback off of my sister just said, um, beautiful speech, but, right? But, that whole incident was my wake-up call after being in VHS. I'm actually the only one out of both of my siblings to graduate from VHS because of the fear tactics that they used to take out my other siblings. That day, a student decided to start off the day by calmly spitting about that after not saying the federal allegiance, which was common. Um, the teacher repeatedly would never do anything about it. I reacted, I got up off of my chair, I did get violent, but when we did get outside in the hallway, the teacher told me that I needed to be the better person because I was capable of doing that. So, my only question is why can't VASD do that? Why can't VASD be the better person? Because in the curriculum, I've been in this school, I've heard the terms wetback, spick.